Okay, good morning class. So today's topic is kerato prosthetesis. So in today's class, we shall try and learn what a kerato prosthetesis is, its various types. Where each type of kerato prosthetesis is indicated, we will also learn who is and who is not a candidate for the same. So the name kerato prosthetesis itself tells us that it's a prosthetic or an artificial cornea. It's abbreviated as KPRO. So when is it actually used? Any patient who has gone blind in both eyes because of a corneal disorder and that patient cannot be taken up for penetrating keratoplasty, KPRO is usually a last resort for such patients. So now that we know where it is used, let's see what it looks like. It has two parts, as we all know of intraocular lenses, it has two parts, an optic and a haptic. The optic is same across all type of KPROs. It's usually a cylinder which is made up of polymethyl methacrylate. The haptic on the other hand or the supporting tissue as we can see here is a backplate made up of titanium, it has multiple holes in it. These holes will allow acquis in the recipient eye to come forward and nourish the donor cornea which is going to be placed on it. After implantation in the eye, the optic cylinder goes through the eye whereas the haptic remains on the surface. So let's see the indications. Based on the indications, KPROs can be divided as type one and type two. As we saw, multiple failed grafts because of corneal blindness and iridia because of the limbial stem cell deficiency, herpetic keratitis, Stevens Johnson syndrome, ocular secretarial panfycoid, these are indications for type one. Whereas type two has similar indications but the ocula surface has to be severely keratinized. The basic difference when to decide whether to go for a type one or type two is type one is used for wet eyes. The eye has to be moist, the tear film has to be good. Whereas type two is usually reserved for dry eyes where the ocula surface is severely keratinized. Other than that, as we can see from the picture here, in type one, the covering tissue is a bandage contact lens. In type two, it's usually skin or buccal mucosa. We can also see here that in type two, there's something mentioned known as an MOOKP, what is it? MOOKP stands for Modified Osteo Odonto Kerato Prosthesis. So the name itself tells us, there will be an osteo component, that is a bone component and a tooth component or a dental component. So let's see what it looks like. It's also considered to be the gold standard for type two, let's see. The optic as we saw is same across all types. The haptic in this case is made up of tooth and bone, usually the canine and the tibia harvested from the recipient patient. So it's an otologous graft. Apart from that, there's a full thickness oral mucosal graft taken from the patient again. So first it has to be assembled, it's a multi-stage surgery usually done over two to three months. After assembly, the tooth, the bone and the optic are filled through a hole in the oral mucosal graft. And after implantation in the eye, it looks somewhat like this. So we can see that kerato prosthetesis is in the center and the buccal mucosa is covering the ocula surface. However, before taking a patient out for any type of KPRO, it's very important to choose a patient correctly and also to counsel them realistically regarding the outcome with regards to vision and cosmesis. So the patient has to have perception of light. It's important to check for the IOP by digital tonometer because glaucoma is one of the complications which we will see later on. Also moist or dry because that will help us decide whether to go for a type one or a type two KPRO. In case of MOOKP, it's also important to go for an oral or a dental evaluation. Uh, so sorry. So complications include glaucoma usually requiring a GDD later on, formation of retroprosthetic membranes or a melt around the optic with acquis leak. They can also lead to endophthalmitis. So I would like to sum up today's class by saying that KPRO is a last resort for corneal blindness which is bilateral in those cases where grafts cannot be utilized. However, in cases of bilateral corneal blindness, both the eyes should never be taken up for KPRO. One should always be reserved for future use. So thank you, this is to sum up today's class. For the next class, I would like you to read about what we discussed today and I would also like you to go through the newer advances and the newer types of KPRO. Thank you.
Have you seen KPRO being done?
No sir, not in my institution, no.
How do you manage retroprosthetic membrane?
So if it's visually insignificant, it can be left alone. However, if it is visually significant, then it either has to be managed either by doing an endiac laser approach or surgical membranectomy.
Any surgical step that you can do during the KPRO procedure that could reduce the risk of retroprosthetic membrane?
That's a good question, that's something that we'll be discussing in the next class.
Alright, I think it was fairly well covered, I enjoyed it. I just wanted one thing about, what is the limitation that you need to tell the patient? What is the limitation of the surgery with respect to vision?
The posterior segment has to be perfectly okay for the patient to regain his vision. It's also a permanent measure and the patient might not regain perfect vision if the posterior segment is not okay. So has to be concerned about that. It will be a constructed visual field because it will only be taking the central part of the retina, the periphery will not receive any light. Thank you.
Good afternoon class. So today, we are going to discuss about management of monoocular congenital cataract. And by the end of this session, we will be able to know that how a congenital cataract differ from an adult cataract, what are the challenges which we face and why amniopia therapy and rehabilitation plays a vital role. We all know that children are not the nano version of an adult. They differ in anatomy and physiological reactions. These things throw us into various kind of challenges. Our first challenge is encountered while clinical examination and presentation. The child is not going to complain about anything, but the parents are going to say that the child is having abnormal white reflex or there is squinting in the eyes. In order to examine the child, we examine the child under general anesthesia with fully dilated pupil. We should, at this time, we look for anterior segment dysgenesis, glaucoma, we measure the IOP. We measure the axial length and keratometric readings are taken at this time only. After this confirming the diagnosis, when should we operate? Preiatric cataract time plays a crucial part. We need to operate the cataract as early as possible, especially in case of monoocular cataract, need to be operated before six weeks of gestation. Eye power calculation is another challenging situation because of continuous change in the anatomy. Our initial desired refractive outcome after eye implantation is moderate hypermetropia to avoid undesired myopic shift in adulthood. Eye level power also depend upon preoperative factors like corneal diameter should be more than 10mm and axial length should be more than 17. Interoperative factors and socio-economic factors also plays a part. Preoperative counseling of the patient is, patient's parents is very important. They need to know that surgery is only the initial part of their management. Surgical management comes as a challenge because of low corneal and scleral rigidity, elastic anterior capsule, soft lens and well-formed vitreous. Surgery is performed under general anesthesia. Anterior capsulotomy is done along with multi-cohortant hydrodissection and by manual lens aspiration. Posterior capsular axis along with anterior vitrictomy is done. Nowadays, eye level of choice is hydrophobic acrylic lenses with square edges. Closure of incision plays a important role with 10-0 nylon sutures. Due to immaturity of blood-acquas barrier, we are threatening salon acetate 1% and cycloplastic drugs are used. Patient is followed up after surgery. Now, visual rehabilitation and amniopia therapies are vital role. Without this, all our efforts will go in vain. Post-operative amniopia therapy should be instituted meticulously. Occlusion therapy for unilateral cataract after surgery should be instituted as early as child at a higher risk of development of amniopia. Follow-up is initially for four to six weeks thereafter every three months. Therapy is tapered once the desired result is obtained. And during whole the follow-up period, the surgeon should keep in mind that there is no development of squint or any kind of refractive error because squint give us the earliest indication that the patient is having difficulty in visualization. So due to short time duration, we will wind up our class today at this point only and your doubts will be taken as questions. Thank you.
What was the heading of your topic?
Management of monoocular congenital cataract.
So you have straight away gone into ILS. Is that the only, what is the age for eye implantation in pediatric patients?
So in my case, in case of monoocular congenital cataract, eye level should be implanted as early as possible before six weeks of gestation. Oh sorry, before six weeks of age. Uh, so I will, I will, I will power implant, eye implantation depends on various factors. Interoperative, preoperative factors where say child, six months age, will you put ILS? So if the, if the reading, if we get a preoperative diagnosis, a preoperative thing?
Any other crucial step that you do whenever you're doing a congenital cataract?
Pardon sir?
Any crucial step that you do when you're doing cataract along with that some more step is done. It's not like you just remove the cataract, one more step is done.
Polishing is done. And posterior, posterior capsule axis is performed along with anterior vitrictomy to break the scaffold of lens epithelial cell migration.
I think eye level in every child is not a mandate. There are parameters in which you will not put an eye level. Age is one of the criterias. There's another criteria on the EUA, the evaluation and anesthesia which you did not cover. If you tell which criteria you did not cover, you said under anesthesia you evaluate for?
Under EUA, we do the examination in pediatric age group because they resist.
What specifically? Cataract, on hand and strict, why you doing your?
For the, for funduscopy should be done thoroughly to see whether there is any kind of pathology in the retina or not or any kind of posterior segment or anterior segment type of dysgenesis is there.
Examination, one point then.
So anterior segment dysgenesis is there or not. Whether, when I will implant, if eye level implantation is allowed, will it, crowding will happen which will, which will give rise to glaucoma, so one should.
So you'll check the IOP also?
Yes sir.
Any other thing which is important in your decision making?
Axial length is very important and corneal diameter.
Wait, wait, you didn't mention that in your presentation. You mentioned, wait, wait, sorry. Okay, so I think in your next class, you will come to prepare the age for eye implantation.
Yes sir.
Warm good afternoon to everyone. Today I'll be talking about expulsive choroidal hemorrhage. But before we move on, let's watch this video. As we can see, while performing the surgery, the fundus reflex changes from bright orange to brown reflex. This is nothing but one of the signs of expulsive choroidal hemorrhage. This three-word entity is a dreaded complication that can occur during any time of the surgery. So what is it? It is the explosive accumulation of blood in the suprachoroidal space sufficient enough to cause the expulsion of the intraocular contents, which can be divided on the basis of size and extent of hemorrhage, time of occurrence. It could be intraoperative, post-operative and precipitating factors, be it spontaneous blunt or penetrating trauma or perioperative. Now moving on to risk factors which are basically divided into four. We have systemic, ocular, intraoperative and post-operative. Systemic includes advanced age, atherosclerosis, diabetes, hypertension, anticoagulant use. While ocular causes are high myopia, afvegia, previous ocular trauma, surgery, elevated IOP. Interoperative causes are usage of general and retrobulbar anesthesia or acute drop in IOP during surgery. And post-operative causes are hypotonia, valsalva or MSIS. Now, hypotonia is considered to be the main culprit for the occurrence of expulsive choroidal hemorrhage, which affects our short and long posterior ciliary arteries. There are various theories postulated for it. One theory suggests that hypotonic, hypotonic causes rupture of the already necrose long and short posterior ciliary artery. While other theory postulates that the low IOP causes choroidal effusion which further causes the leakage and thereby choroidal hemorrhagic effusion. Now moving on to incidence, we can see from the data available here, the glaucoma surgery has the maximum that is 0.15% to 6.1%. Vitreretinal surgery has 0.17% to 1.9%. PKP 0.087% to 1.08%. ECC 1.13% to 4% and feco emulsification has the lowest incidence of 0.013 to 0.15%. Now, one must be alert for the signs and symptoms of expulsive choroidal hemorrhage. That is AC shallowing, blood in the anterior chamber, loss of red reflex, wrinkling or bulging of the posterior capsule, raised IOP and extrusion of the intraocular contents. Now, as the saying goes, prevention is better than cure. So preoperatively, we must perform complete medical and ophthalmic evaluation and manage all the comorbidities of the patient. And operatively, we have to minimize the phenylephrine use and we should prefer local anesthesia over global anesthesia. And post-operatively, we should avoid eye trauma, hypotonia or any valsalva maneuvers. Now, imaging is very helpful in diagnosing the extent as well as the location of the expulsive choroidal hemorrhage. As we can see here in, as we can see here in B scan, we could appreciate the dome-shaped appearance suggestive of choroidal detachment along with hemorrhagic effusion. Which when combined with A scan, we will get a M spike suggesting of choroidal detachment and lower reflective spikes in the suprachoroidal space indicating the clotted hemorrhage. Now, how we should manage such cases? We must perform immediate temporad of leading vessels along with managing the IOP medically. We can achieve it by either direct pressure or immediate closure of all incisions with whatever sutures we have available in hand. Now, if ocular contents are expelled, we should put it back in timely fashion or otherwise we must drain the uncogulated blood through trocarin session or sclerotomy. And anterior chamber formation is must through viscoelastic agent or air. Now, in case of unsuccessful drainage, we have to maintain high IOP via limbial infusion or anterior chamber maintainer or we could go for perfluorocarbon liquid insertion. Now, moving on to prognosis, the overwhelming majority of patient do not achieve pre-hemorrhagic visual equity which are dependent on various factors like preoperative visual equity, retinal detachment, affair and peopleery defect. Thank you.
In the post-operative period, sometimes you can get delayed SCH also.
Yes sir.
How do you differentiate it from the serous series clinically?
So clinically, we'll opt for imaging program sir mainly B scan. The reflective spikes we will see in the suprachoroidal space would helpful in determining the density of the content in the suprachoroidal space. That's what.
What do you see inside the dome, that is important?
Sorry sir?
Inside the dome, what you see, how's the reflectivity?
Sir, if there is fresh clot, we'll get the higher reflective spikes with irregular structure and irregular internal reflectivities. While as the clot lysis occurs, we'll get a lower reflective spikes with a more regular structure, we could see.
But you should be aware of how to diagnose serous also clinically also you can get some filters. And thus, do you have to operate all patients with SCH?
Uh, sir, if it is a limited SCH, we would firstly go for medical management. Like lowering the IOP, maintaining mean high IOP. Either normotonus or even hypertonus state we could achieve medically and.
When do you operate?
Sir, in unsalvage, if there is extensive SCH, if there is expulsion of intraocular contents, we would opt for surgeries.
Post-operative. You see it on the first day?
Yes sir.
There's SCH. So how do you, you said medically managed, but when do you operate?
Sir, post-operatively, we must operate after seven to fourteen days when the clot lysis has occurred because.
You said you don't operate all cases, no?
Sir, if post-operative SCH occurs then.
That could be limited SCH also, no?
Yes sir.
I just wanted to ask, why does any, why does glaucoma have higher chances? Because you're operating the high pressure, right? You said to this factor, hypotonia.
Yes sir.
So why do glaucoma patients have?
Some, there are more oscillations of IOP while performing the surgery. The larger incisions and larger maneuver and manipulation during the surgery could be a precipitating factor of, for development of suprachoroidal hemorrhage.
You should not take, the message should not be that each and every case of SCH has to be surgically managed. A lot of them limited one, if the IOP is okay, information is well-controlled, you can safely, considerably manage and it could resolve. If there's a kissing corridors, the IOP is uncontrolled, in such cases you may have to surgically intervention.
Yes sir. Thank you sir.
Good morning, respected doctors and my dear colleagues. I'll be presenting my talk on recent advances on wet ARMD. So firstly, the pathogenesis. The phagocyte host lipids accumulate beneath the RP sometimes along with amyloid, leading to formation of drusens. Now, these drusens create a hypoxic ischemic environment, leading to proliferation of blood vessels by vajf and also growth factors and cytokines are released which causes the release of fluid here. Types of CNVM, if it is below RP, it is type one. Type two is at the level of retina, type three is above RP. Role of octa is a non-invasive means to detect motion contrast by comparing various signals between the repeated B scans that are being done at given cross-section that detects the blood flow. This is a timeline that has been demonstrated in the wet ARMD. The first thing that was developed was monoclonal antibodies and the rest will be dealt in further slides. Laser photocouglation was the first thing that was developed. So in this, we directly target the laser beam at the new blood vessel. But as obvious, the surrounding area is also getting damaged. The study that was done here was macular photocouglation study. It was a phase three clinical trial. However, here loss of visual equity was also observed, which was followed by photodynamic therapy. In this case, verti porfin is injected intravenously which converts the physical energy to chemical energy. This chemical energy histamine and TNF alpha is released causing activity in capillary endothelium cells. Now, this area gets damaged. However, this therapy has very photosensitivity reaction was observed and it is a costly therapy which led to the gold standard management which is now practiced is anti-vajf. The first that was developed was pegatinip followed by ranibizumab, aflibursac, bivasi zuma, broluzizuma. The trials of Marina and Anker were the starting trials which were PDT against anti-vajf. Clearly, anti-vajf proved to be better, followed by Horizon and Seven Up study. The pronto study helped to determine whether OCT can served as a basis to guide the treatment of wet AMD followed by CAT study and Ewan study where bivasi zuma was compared with ranibizuma. Broluzizuma is the wonder drug which is now the top of the town because of its small molecular weight, 26 kilo dalton. Hence, it can be injected in large amounts and the repeated drug that needs to be given is extended. The main trial that was done was Hock and Harrier trial. Because of its anti-inflammatory action also, so retina was comparatively drier compared to the ranibizuma. Farisi map is traded in the name of VABSMO. It is approved in January 2022. VABSMO stands for VA stands for visual equity, BY stands for its bimodal action. Bimodal meeting, anti-angio point in two action is supported along with anti-vajf, thereby there is reduced inflammation. The two regimens mainly are treat and extend regimen and PRN regimen, both of which loading doses are there. But we can extend and treat and extend as long as to ten weeks if, as long there is no fluid in OCT or visual equity is not diminished. In PRN also, the patient here needs to be followed up monthly. Newer perspectives include apsi par pegol, conversap, this is approved in China, KSI 301, OPT 302. The port delivery system is a new innovative intraocular drug delivery system. This is designed for continuous delivery of ranibizuma into the vitreous for six months and beyond. This is a major transformation, it has also been approved last year only. Human induced pluripotent stem cell, in this therapy, we are trying to replace the new, the RPE. Gene therapy here is advarum, a novel adenovirus associated virus. Technology has also been proposed here where we are trying to basically create a bio factory for anti-vajf so that there is more production. Surgical options although was done early, some are practiced till now. Evacuation of submacular hemorrhage along with intra-vitral TPA and anti-vajf. Macular transplantation and RP choroid transplantation are also other surgeries.
Thank you.
What was your topic?
It's a management of wet ARMD.
Recent management or?
Recent management.
You overshot your presentation. You had to rush through the recent managements because you spent time on the older managements. That's not the focus. The focus is not on older management or the investigative. Focus is on what is the state of heart. Why is it important to know the various subtypes of CNVMs?
Sir, because what, earlier it was very important to know the types of CNVM because we need to see whether it is occult or at the level of RP and if it is a type three or polyvoident because that will judge our treatment. Anti-vajf therapy is given in all, but.
So if it's a same drug that's being used for all, what do you need to know which level is it? What are the various types of CNVMs on OCT? You said classic, that is on FFL.
That is on FFL.
Positive, use some more information about the location of the C, so what are the types?
Sub, sub RP, RP and interretinal.
Okay, dharavon, sub RP, dharavon.
Sub RP then at the level of RP then followed by RAP use on retina.
And what, what you have to be careful or aware when you're giving, what is the main side effect that is seen?
There's got a high inflammatory reactions have been noted in proluzizuma.
The patient has to consult, you will have to keep a closer watch and you have to avoid monite patients. Patient with previous history of leucritis.
I think there was a lot of slide, couple of slides on trials. I just wanted to know if there are any four clinically implementable learning from the trials. Like you mentioned so many, you know Marina, Anker. Now what is clinical accepted practices, is there any points you want to mention?
Yes sir, the final, bivasi zuma versus ranibizuma trial was done because of the cost affair it was done.
All the trials, right? So if you want to summarize the trials in clinically implementable protocols, is there any summary that you can remember which you can actually put?
So we can put like this, like ranibizuma, bivasi zuma, both can be done. And treat and extend regimen can be followed and it should be on a patient basis, not on our choice or. It should be firstly according to the patient where treat and extend would be followed or PRN will be followed.
Anything else?
And sir, other thing that led to development of further anti-vajfs, other trial like Hock and Harrier, we also proved that we need an anti-inflammatory action.
Right, and anti-vajfs are the good standard. Regimens put very, either a PRN or anything else because very prominent in these trials. H, emphasize the role of OCT.
OCT, role of OCT as a PR, pronto study.
On a way of following the vision in the patient. Now, let's take the last point firstly, newer drugs.
New drugs, okay.
Alright, thank you.
Good afternoon everyone. In this class, we are going to study newer advances in corneal ulcer management. Student, this topic is very important for your theory as well as YY examination, so please be careful. We will discuss the topic into three broad heading which will be investigation, treatment and future scope. In investigation, we will be discussing corneal biopsy, confocal microscopy, PCR and MDS, that is metagenomic deep sequencing. I always ask you people to send corneal scrapings before initiating antimicrobial agent once patient of corneal ulcer came to us. But many a times we see that culture and staining came out to be negative, especially in deep mycotic keratitis. In that condition, corneal biopsy become necessary. We should perform corneal biopsy under operative microscope or using complete lamp. By confocal microscopy, you can identify larger organism of size more than 15 micron such as echinotherma and filamentous fungus. I have shown in this picture echinotherma cyst and fungal hyphae. But remember, you can't identify bacteria by this. Coming to polymerase chain reaction, this is a very useful tool for the identification of infective organism of corneal ulcer. This test is very accurate and smaller test sample is required. Results came in ours. But the major limitation is it is very costly and artificial amplification of non-pathogenic organism can occur. Metagenomic deep sequencing is next generation sequencing technology here. It can identify any organism, whether it is bacteria, fungus, echinotherma or anything else. It also allows rapid diagnosis. Coming to treatment portion, in targeted therapy currently, we are using two drug which are emfutrisin B and voliconajol, intra-cameral and intrastomal. Photo-activated chromophore for keratitis corneal collagen cross-linking. This act via three mechanism, it limits microbial replication, it damages pathogen cell wall by releasing reactive oxygen species and it cross-link the corneal stroma via covalent bond. This is useful for multi-drug resistance infectious keratitis. But you have to remember, if there is suspicion or even history of herpes simplex keratitis, you can't perform this technique as viruses can get reactivated after exposure of UV radiation. Rose Bengal photodynamic therapy also works on the same principle as corneal collagen cross-linking. But the difference is here, we are using rose Bengal dye 0.1 to 0.2% excited with green light of wavelength 500 to 550 nanometer. But the advantage is that you can treat fungal keratitis and methicillin resistance. But the advantage is that you can treat fungal keratitis and methicillin resistance stuff orious keratitis as well. Phototherapy therapeutic keratoctomy is useful for early localized buzerium, mycobacterium and pseudomonas infection. Coming to surgical management glue application for perforation less than two mm amniotic membrane grafting for larger perforation. And it is preferred for peripheral lesion at it has tendency to incorporate into stroma so this can hamper the visual equity therapeutic keratoplasty. You have to remember that the main that is the primary goal of therapeutic keratoplasty is not to give good vision to your patient. But to maintain structural integrity and to get rid of infection. Now what are the future scope? Portable in vivo confocal abthalmoscope. This is a new technique which will surely cut down the cost of confocal microscopy. Nanoparticle for sustained antifungal drug delivery. Thank you for your patient listening. Before ending this class, I have an announcement for you guys. In next class you people will have exam and topic will be corneal ulcer. Thank you.
I was curious about surgery. You mentioned therapeutic keratoplasty which we've been doing for close to thirty forty years. Anything more recent because the topic is on recent manner.
Sir, currently I'm not aware of anything else. I will let you know in next class, sir.
Alright.
After the exam, sir, we will discuss.
Alright, the other thing was when you're looking at echinotherma.
Yeah.
What is a risk factor that you need to ask for? And anything?
Contact lens use.
And is that common?
Bathing in pond.
Okay, water and dust.
Yeah, yeah.
Alright.
Thank you, sir.
Good afternoon students. Today's topic is schlemck canal surgeries and Dr. Wannah has previously taught you about the medical management of the glaucoma. Today we are going to start the surgical management of the glaucoma. Before going to the schlemck canal surgery, we should be looking about anatomy of the schlemck canal. It's light beneath the limbus that is junction between the blue zone of this cornea and the white zone of this sclera. The schlemck canal drains the acusumor from the interior chamber to the episcleral veins. The type of the schlemck canal surgeries are ab externo to ab internal process. That is non-penetrating glaucoma surgeries in ab externo deep sclerectomy, visco-canalostomy, canaloplasty. And ab internal process that is with device that is ice tent, ice tent inject and hydrus. Without device it's rubectum, kahook, double blade, ab internal canaloplasty and a gonioscopy assisted transliminal canaloplasty. Deep select coming to a deep sclerectomy it reduces IOP by external filtration of the acusumor by slow process through the trabecular desment window. The inner wall of the schlemck canal in a juxtapinocular trabeculum is peeled and a intra scleral lake or a decompression chamber is formed. The indication of deep sclerectomy are primary open glaucoma, pigmentary glaucoma, pseudoexfoliative glaucoma and uncontrolled high IOP and poor medical compliance therapy. Coming to the contraindication of deep sclerectomy are new vascular glaucoma, traumatic glaucoma, scarred conjunctival, angle closure glaucoma and iris extensive peripheral anterior sinus. Coming to the canaloplasty, this is the second procedure of non-penetrating deep sclerectomy. In this nine zero prolene suture is threaded into schlemck canal three sixty degree. And a tried prolene suture in the schlemck canal increases the dimension of the canal and improves the acusus outflow. Coming to the CO2 laser assisted sclerectomy in this as the carbon dioxide has a laser ablative property on the sclera so redo finger schlemck canal is done by the CO2. The complication of non-penetrating deep sclerectomy are as in the intraoperative. If we will be too superficial, it leads to inability find the schlemck canal. And if it will be too deep lead to perforation of the tedium membrane. Iris prolapses, conversion to trabiculotomy. Post-operative complication will be including hypotonic, choroidal effusions and IOP spikes. Coming to the minimal invasive glaucoma surgery that is characterized by the implant or a procedure to lower the IOP by an outflow mechanism. Usually by ab internal approach associated with very little or no conjunctival or scleral dissections. The key feature of the minimal invasive glaucoma surgeries are minimal surgical trauma. Fair IOP overing efficacy safer compared to other glaucoma surgeries like a glaucoma drainage devices or a trap. Rapid recovery with a minimal impact on the patient's quality of the life. Procedures targeting the trabecular outflow will be ice tent, ice tent inject and a hydrus. These allow for direct access to the acus from the interior chamber to the schlemck canal. The limitation will be as the glaucoma patients having EVP raised in some patients so the post-operative IOP cannot fall below the EVP. The ab internal process procedures without implant included gonioscopy assisted transliminal trabiculotomy, TRAP three sixty and ab internal canaloplasty. Advantage will be no implanted rigs as no implant is left behind with this procedure. Thank you. We'll be discussing. We'll be discussing in next class about the videos of the surgeries and your doubts also.
What's your choice of surgery? You have given a lot of options. Do you have a patient who needs a surgery? What would be your go-to choice? And what are the factors that decide which you choose over the other?
So it's according to the patients firstly the conjunctival if the conjunctival is healthy is not scarred will be going for that trabiculectomy and if.
And to sit totally to this, you know the patient, you are looking at these options.
Yes.
But among these options, which would you choose and why?
Some minimal invasive glaucoma surgeries will be.
There is type no ice tent.
Yes, sir. So ice tent, ice tent injects, ice tent inject will be delivering two stents at a same interval of time. And it will be fairly lowering the IOP greater than twenty percent from the baseline. So sir, I'll be going for ice tent, ice and inject and it is also a small processes in or whole over the body so I'll be going for that.
How many ice tents are injected?
So two and a three, three clock hours apart.
If it fails then?
So if it's fail then we'll be going, sir, I will let you know in another class.
Can you remove it and put in another area that area it's not running? So you need a special lens or you under?
Sir, nasally we'll be putting.
To insert the stents, do you need a special type of lens to visualize?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So gonioscope lens will be needing.
Does it have a name?
Yes, sir.
The gonioscope lens does it have a name?
Sorry, sir, I'll be letting you know in another class I don't know, sir.
Alright, what is the gold standard? Why, what are you comparing with? All this is compared to?
Such trabiculectomy procedure.
What is the percentage drop for a trabiculectomy? How much percentage drop would you get for any of these?
Sir, the gold standard is trabiculectomy only because they will be dropping the pressure not more than than the trabiculectomy. So if the IOP is highly raised and not decreasing then we'll be going for trabiculectomy only.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Just please come in the front. Yeah, Ankita. So what if a patient with macho cataract or a dense vitreous hemorrhage comes to you and asks, will I be able to see? How will you determine? Well, the answer is macular function test and that is the topic of our discussion today. So macular function tests we divide them based on clear media and opaque media and we'll see this test one by one. So the first thing you do when a patient comes to you in OPD is check his visual equity. So if on a pinhole if the visual equity worsens that means the patient has macular disease. Now, once you have estimated best corrected visual equity. You shine a torchlight for ten seconds in patient's eye and ask him to read the chart again. Well, normally a patient will see scotomas because of the retinal bleaching and it takes fifteen to thirty seconds to recover from this. And if the time is delayed to more than fifty seconds, well, it is because of some macular condition. Now the patient may have six by six vision but the quality of the vision may not be that good. So for that you need to check the contrast sensitivity using pelliropson chart. Not just the contrast but the color perception is also altered in case of macular diseases. And a patient with macular condition may have a blue-yellow color weakness that is called as stridentopia. Now take a look at the chart that I've given you. We are going to perform a ambler grid test. With the best corrected visual equity, you have to close your eye. And hold the chart thirty centimeters away from you and look at the center of the chart. If you see any wavy lines or there is a missing area, it is suggestive of a macular condition. Then coming to the slit lamp biomicroscopy, a Vatsky Allen test can be performed where you project a slit beam on the fovea. And you ask the patient if there's any break or discontinuity in this line. Well, that suggests a macular lesion. OCT can be used to see the morphological structure of the macula and FFA gives an idea about foveal avascular zone. Microperimetry which is this gap between morphology and the function where the fovea is projected with light stimuli and its function is noted. Now, more importantly, opaque media has a role for macular function tests. So when a patient comes to you with semi-opaque media, you can do a Madoxro test wherein a patient may see a distorted line or a break in the line. That is because of a macular lesion. Now, in case of a cataract patient where you want to estimate the potential vision post-operatively. A laser interferometry can project fringes and a potential visual equity meter can project snellin chart on the fovea. And that is from a relatively clear area from the cataractus lens. And that is how you can estimate the potential vision in these cases. But what if the lens is very dense in this hard macho cataract? Well, in that case you can induce entoptic phenomenon by transluminating the sclera. Where the patient will be able to see Perkinj tree-like images or a blue-filled image. And that is nothing but patient's own neutrophils in his retinal vessels. So if the examiner asks you, how will you estimate visual potential in case of babies or in tomatoes patients? Well, the answer is electrophysiological test. Multifocal ERGs or pattern EP can be done to estimate the potential vision. So to take home, I hope you have understood the macular function test. These are based on clear media and opaque media and out of this visual equity especially the pinhole test. The contrast sensitivity, color perception test, the ambler grid, these are important from your exam point of view. You should also be knowing for the Madoxro and electrophysiological test. Any questions?
I think very well presented.
Thank you, sir.
You've covered everything that can be done practically in the OP as well as you took us through the advanced investigative tests also. Very well presented.
Feedback from my students is well appreciated. Thank you, sir.
The my only objection would be two things. One is the slit lamp biomicroscopy that you showed was of the disc.
Yes, sir.
Whereas we are looking at the macula.
Yes, sir, very observant you are, sir.
The second is when you talk about ERG, you do not talk only of some macular or the multifocal ERG. You always have to give it in the context of a full field ERG.
Full field, yes, sir.
It's never assessed only based on the macular pathology. You do a full field and then also do a macular to show the differentiation is so that it's not a global phenomenon but just a macular.
Macular phenomenon, yes, sir.
I want to know if there is any limit for doing the ambler test. What's the vision limitation? How much vision do you really require to do?
The patient should have good near vision, visual equity. And eight should be good, I think.
We'll be checking that for the next class.
Yes, sir, I will get back to you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, good afternoon class. We are going to talk about ocular manifestations of tuberculosis. We will be covering the importance, the pathophysiology behind it, the manifestations mainly and a little bit about the management. So India is a endemic country to tuberculosis and around ten percent of the uveitis cases are attributed to tuberculosis. Which is why we need to study it. The eye involvement can be because of an active mycobacterial infection which could reach the eye through a hematogenous root or through a local spread. This, another method which is the immunological response is the main cause behind most of the mechanisms, most of the presentations we are going to see today. And this is because of a delayed hypersensitivity reaction to the TB antigen. A patient may come to you with a classic anterior granuloma test uveitis picture with mutton fat capes with busacanodules as well as kepinodules in the pupillary margin. What we can also see in this picture is posterior sinus, which are broad-based. This is highly predictive of tubercular uveitis. Intermediate uveitis though seen in less number of patient can come with snowball opacities along with associated vitritis and cystoid macular edema. Look at this picture very closely, we can see multifocal lesions coalescing in the posterior pole. We can see pigment clumping at the center of the heel lesion and an advancing edge shown by the yellow arrow. This again is serpiginous like choroiditis and is a very important predictor of tubercular uveitis. We can also sometimes see choroidal granulomas that are there along with a choroiditis lesion and an advancing edge that is shown by the black arrows. Look at this picture clearly again, what we can see is perivascular sheathing along with retinal hemorrhages. This is retinal vasculitis when comes with or without choroiditis. This is again highly significant and highly predictive of tubercular uveitis. This picture is of a patient who has come to you from the ICUs, referred to you from the ICU and this is what you see. There are multifocal, small grayish white to yellow opacity, yellow lesions that you can see, these are nothing but choroidal tubercles. This is a sign of active mycobacterial infection that is occurring inside the fundus and this is a sign of mealy TB. TB is known to affect most of, most parts of the eyes. The patient can come with flicktenular keratoconjugativeitis, granulomas, interstitial keratitis, lid granulomas and scleral involvement. What if the patient comes to you with a classical clinical presentation? You'll call it a presumptive TB, send the patient for an immunological test like tuberculin skin sensitivity test and a documented exposure to TB. We'll call it a possible tuberculosis. Along with this, if we have a documented exposure and a radiological evidence suggestive of a present active or a past infection, a past lesion, we call it probable TB. The mainstay of our treatment is to protect the visual function, to control the ocular inflammation as well as to prevent recurrence. So we must start the patient on anti-tubercular treatment as well as steroids. So my take-home messages include the importance being that TB is endemic to India. It affects the eye through an active infection or an immunological response. If you see broad-based posterior sinus, serpiginous like choroiditis, retinal vasculitis with or without choroiditis. We have to suspect TB first and we have to start the patient on ATT as well as corticosteroids. After first advising X-ray of the chest and other immunological testing. So, thank you.
Great presentation. Did you cover the role of PCR?
I didn't cover the role of PCR. Actually, PCR is the gold standard method to diagnose this. But since it is a difficult and it's an invasive procedure, we don't always need to do it. We don't have to do it in every patient. So what I mean to say is it is better to do a MANTO test and an X-ray test and then suggest based on the clinical presentations. Along with other symptomatology, we can start the patient on anti-tubercular treatment along with steroids.
Let you put it the other way, which is where you know PCR. Certainly, that's not all case need a PCR. But if I were to go PCR, what would be my implications? From all the area of reading a picture that you showed and it's very well covered.
Thank you, sir. We can do a PCR for an external orbital involvement for a lid granuloma probably for a.
Do a PCR for a lid granuloma and you can indicate a bile.
Yeah, yes, I can do. Yes, it's true. Quantiferon also we can do but it gives a large false positive rates. MANTO gives a large negative.
Also presenting you need to talk of everything. So the test, where do you put PCR?
It was ocular manifestation so I just covered very little part of the. Yes, sir. Not on treatment or.
So just for the benefit, you do a PCR anything exactly affecting each other. Whether if you're dealing with more of immunological that you don't do the PCR.
Right, sir.
Thank you, nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Everyone, I'm going to be presenting my topic which is ocular myasthenia. Now, as we all know, myasthenia gravis is a disease of the neuromuscular junction. And it mostly affects the post. And it mostly affects the post-synaptic neuromuscular junction receptors. And it usually affects your limbs, your bulbar muscles and further on your respiratory muscles. Now, it has a bimodal pattern of presentation. Uh for the second to third decade, it's more common in females. And for the six to eight decade, it's more common in males. Now, the pathophysiology is again, it's a complement mediated damage to the postsynaptic receptors. Now, ocular myasthenia is a subtype of myasthenia gravis. And the weakness mainly affects your extraocular muscles, LPS and the orbicularis oculi muscle. Now, a diplopia which is usually present, it may be an isolated finding or it can be present with other findings. And the most common muscle affected is medial rectus. Now, ptosis is the most common presentation of ocular myasthenia. It is usually present around fifty to sixty percent of the patients. And classically, it is said that this kind of ptosis, it kind of worsens with the evening. So it can be unilateral, bilateral and it is usually asymmetrical. And we can elicit the lid fatigue test or the Coogan's lid twitch. And also we have orbicularis weakness, which is unilateral eyelid retraction which can be seen. Now, diagnostically speaking, we have the sleep test in which the patient is asked to rest for thirty minutes. And we have to document if there is a resolution of the extraocular muscle weakness or ptosis. And after that, we have the ice test wherein pre and post documentation of ptosis is done. And a positive ice test is said if there is an improvement of more than two mm. And this test has a sensitivity of around seventy-six point nine percent. And it's specific to up to ninety-eight point three percent for ocular myasthenia patients. Edrophonium is a competitive inhibitor of acetylcholine esterase at the neuromuscular junction. So this tends to increase the amount of acetylcholine at the junction. So it is given as a parenteral dose in an IV formulation. First, a test dose of two mg per ml is given, followed by eight, the rest eight mg per ml. And photographic documentation of ptosis and extraocular muscles is done. And nerve conduction studies are actually the basis of diagnosing ocular myasthenia. Uh the first one being the RNS, that's we get thirty-three percent, thirty-three percent patients get a decremental response. And SFEMG, that is the single fiber electromyography, is the most sensitive. Uh investigation done for ocular myasthenia gravis. And done on the frontalis or the orbicularis oculi, the sensitivity can be up to hundred percent. Immunologically, we have the acetylcholine receptor antibodies, titers. Elevated titers do confirm the diagnosis, but they do not rule out ocular myasthenia. We have another antibody that is the anti-musk antibodies in patients wherein the acetylcholine receptor antibodies are absent. Uh these antibodies tend to be present. And congenital myasthenia syndrome is seronegative. So thirty to seventy-five percent again acetylcholine receptor antibodies are positive in ocular myasthenia. Now, treatment-wise, we can give acetylcholine, acetylcholine esterase inhibitors. Which is predostigmine available in a thirty-milligram tablet. And corticosteroids, they are usually given in a lower dose, prednisolone is preferred. They have both immunomodulating and anti-inflammatory properties. And further on, azithoprine, cyclosporine and mycophenolate morphine can be given. Uh wherein this side effects of the steroids are too much bearing to the patient. And IVIG and plasma fericitin thiamectin are done for the same. So this is a little mnemonic to remember the whole class by. Thank you.
And why is it that the ice test works?
Sir, basically, it's based on the temperature, there's going to be increased accumulation of acetylcholine at the receptor junction, so that's why it works.
How common is thymoma in?
Sir, it is, it's for generalized myasthenia gravis is pretty common. And many astral thymomas are being operated as the last end resort for. So approximately twenty to thirty percent patients have thymomas.
Welcome to the panel and dear students. Uh we'll be discussing about a very delicate part of being a doctor, that is breaking bad news. And it has been put very rightly that if we do it badly, the patient or family members may never forgive us. But if we do it well, they may never forget us. So what is bad news? Any news that drastically and negatively alters the patient view of his or her future is considered as bad news. And the patient and family expectations have to be managed, be their privacy or how to empathize with them. Uh while maintaining the dignity. And the information which we give to the patient should be very accurate. And we should decide who to give and how much to give. And there are a spectrum of ways in which patient may respond. And we need to know every response to deal it very gracefully. And these are the basic doors like maintaining privacy and respect and honesty. And highly knows are never distort the truth or give any false assurance. And following a protocol makes it very easier to deal with the process. And there are, there are uh many protocols, but most commonly used is spike protocol. Which is a six-step strategy for breaking bad news. And these are the six steps. The first step is setting the interview in which you plan your meeting. And choose a right time and a place, preferably quiet, without any distraction. And in the stage, you have to make the rapport with the patient. And in second stage, we have to perceive the patient understanding of their condition. And which we do by asking open-ended question. And in third stage, we invite the patient, if they want to know. Some most patient want the full information, but some may shun information. Fourth step is where we actually break the bad news to the patient. You have to do it in a very plain language and get to the point and give the pause. And at the end, use teach-back method to verify that if message was received or not. And this is very important to observe and validate the patient's emotion and give them time to process their feelings. And finally, at the end, summarize the bad news. And offer the agenda for the next meeting and next steps to be taken and close the interview. So briefing it again, the first step is you set the meeting with the patient. Second step is perceive the understanding what patient has. Third, invite him whether he wants to know the information or not. And fifth, where we actually break the bad news to the patient. And then respect his feeling and respond with empathy. And let him, let him or her process their emotions. And at the last, summarize the bad news and what all next steps to be taken. So I can, I will conclude my presentation with the talk that good physician treats the disease. But the great physician treats the disease who have, patient who has the disease. Thank you for your kindness.
A nice talk, a difficult topic that you got. Which are the eye conditions where you think you might face such a situation?
Sir, any condition which hampers the vision permanently. Uh like a post-ocular trauma or sir. If patient optic atrophy or CNVM or. Uh retinoblastoma, ocular malignancies.
As a resident, what's your role here?
So, so as a resident, so I'll follow the spike protocol. So first, I'll know the detailed history of the patient. And set the meeting and assess the patient perception if he knows or not. And then slowly, slowly, sir, I'll get along and impart the bad news.
Does the house agree with her comment? I want to ask you, as a resident. I think as a resident, you should not be getting involved in this.
Hmm, yes.
This should be handled by the consultant.
Consultant, yes.
It's very important that as residents, you do not tell anything other than what the consultant would.
Yes, sir, definitely.
A lot, it'll actually create a lot of.
Chaos.
And ill-feeling, a lot of difficulties for the consultants.
Yes.
Wherever you have, you just step back and tell them that it will be taken care. Your role might come after the consultant has spoken. After the consultant has given a complete picture. And then if the patient still has some doubts, at your level of understanding, if you feel, you can answer them. You should, otherwise.
Yes, right.